The time is 7:01 and we'll call to order the City Council meeting for October 24th. Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Keller?
Here.
Mr. DeGenova?
Here.
Mr. Roar?
Here.
Mr. Hellinger?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Mayor Riggle?
Here.
Item two on the agenda is the indication which tonight will be elect by Mr. DeGenova, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance if you'll all please stand.
We have a lot going on in the city and one of the things next week is Halloween and the kids will be out on their rooms, six to eight, so I want to make sure we keep them out of harm's way and the police and the fire department do a good job of that, but let's remember them. And then the following month is Veterans Month, which we'll get into that later. If you would bow. Dear Lord, our heaven, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity of being here in this council chamber representing our constituents. We know we're not perfect and we don't make decisions that are to everyone's liking, but we try our best for our own communities. We ask, Lord, that you be with each one of us, each one of our staff members here and give them a safe journey home. We ask also that you are with our police and fire department as they put out their lives every day for this community. We ask, Lord, that you be with our young people, our future leaders, that you can guide and direct them in a manner that they will come back to Delaware and be proud to serve and live in Delaware. We ask, Lord, to bless this young lady that's going to take on a new role here in Delaware at Main Street and for the knowledge, guidance, and direction that she might need to overcome any obstacle. And we ask, Lord, that you be with us throughout the next holiday season. We ask these things of your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the great and honorable service of this country, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Phil. Item four on the agenda is the approval of the motion summary. If the clerk will please read this on the record.
Do you want them separated or together?
You can read it together.
Approval of the motion summary for the work session of council held October 3rd, 2016 as recorded and transcribed, and approval of the motion summary of the regular meeting of council held October 10th, 2016 as recorded and transcribed.
Thank you. What is the wish of council?
I move for the approval of both. As somebody...
DeGenova, second minister Schaefer, roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Roar?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle, I'm staying.
At this time, I want to apologize for all the meetings that I missed. I'm really sorry and I thank you guys for carrying on without me and thank you for sitting in my position. So I really appreciate it.
Item five is the consent agenda. If you'll please read this on the record.
Item A, acceptance of the motion summary for the Civil Service Commission meeting held September 7th, 2016. Item B, acceptance of the motion summary for the Sister City Advisory Board meeting held July 12th, 2016. Item C, acceptance of the motion summary for the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting held June 8th, 2016. Item D, acceptance of the motion summary for the Public Works Public Utilities Committee meeting held July 5th, 2016. Item E, acceptance of the motion summary for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting held August 16th, 2016. Item F, acceptance of the motion summary for the Planning Commission meeting held September 7th, 2016.
Thank you. What is the wish of council on the consent agenda?
Considered, given.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, secured by Mr. Roar. Thank you. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Roar?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle? Yes. Question carries. Item six is time set aside for letters, petitions, or any public comments on anything that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward at this time?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor.
And to have the seat, I named your name and your address for the record.
Mark Johnson, 228 South Franklin Street, Delaware, Ohio. And I'm short. Oh, Lord. First of all, I want everyone here to know I understand the sacrifice that each of you make. I mean, you're here, what I consider after hours, you're away from your family. And that is a sacrifice. You know, being a single parent, I raise my children and I appreciate personally everything you do and also a benediction. I mean, I never would imagine, because this is only my second town, or I mean, City Council meeting, I never would imagine that they actually do that. And it's refreshing and I just want to thank all of you for that, you know. A couple of my issues that I had the last time I was here, I was also getting my dates mixed up too, and I apologize for that, was some of the roads and stuff on the south end. And I believe that's going to be addressed in a week or two, maybe on the 7th with the parking...
Parking and safety.
Parking and safety, right. That's going to be handled then, you know. Also, one thing I would like to bring up too, I don't know if they allow this, but I know if I told you all before, I'm a retired sergeant from the Ohio Formatory for Women. And one thing that we were allowed to do as a sergeant, if we were short on staff or something, instead of calling people up and saying, "You've got to come in," Sarge, we go work as an officer. You know, I'm already there. I would be able to go work as an officer and that way someone doesn't have to be called in. We're getting ready to go into the winter time here and it kind of bothers me when I see a city truck on bicycle trail plowing snow in a pickup truck, but yet the roads aren't even done yet. And what I would suggest, since if he is qualified to drive a plow and he's in a truck, city worker, let's fill the roads first instead of the bicycle paths, you know. I do agree, the bicycle paths do need to be cleared, but there should be an order, everything is done, because if the roads aren't cleared, how are you going to get your bicycle to the bicycle path? You know, that's just my opinion there. And one thing too is, we can respectfully disagree, you know. I mean, that's one thing I believe in. It is what it is, you know, but I would like to see the different departments of the city, if they're qualified for that position, driving the truck, plow, let's hit the roads and then let's hit the trails, you know. It interlocks a lot better. It worked for the state at least, you know. And we are in the same union as the city workers are, you know. So if we were allowed to, you know, I just wanted to bring that up to you. And everything else, I believe, is going to be, you know, considered or, you know, talked about at a later date. But I do appreciate everything that you all do and I just wanted you to know that, you know, it's a sacrifice and it's noted. At least it is by me. And I want to thank you all for it.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Kyle Smothers. I'm at 2244 Brewster, Department 28. I just noticed something in my community, so that we've got the Willows, which is a large apartment complex. I've got the LRE community and some houses. And we've got the interstate here. We've got a lot of businesses here. And for the past, like, I'm bad at public speaking, so that's my difference. For the past like 10 or 20 years, we've been able to walk across this ball field to get there. And this is not just me, there's like hundreds of people do this. So the problem is that they are reclaiming this ball field and tearing it all out and they're stringing this cable across it. They're putting posted "No Trespassing and Private Property" signs all over it. So we get the impression we're not supposed to walk through there anymore and like, kind of. So the only way that us as a whole complex can get over the Big Lots and McDonald's and all that is by, I kind of feel like trespassing through the nursing home parking lot, because they built a sidewalk for their residence, but it's for the nursing home, or walking through this ball field, which they're now kind of, somebody bought it and they're reclaiming it and they're kind of telling us, "Posted no trespassing." So we don't have any access. And the only other way we could do it is drive a car, which not everyone can do.
This is right by McDonald's, the ball field there?
Yeah, Miller.
Okay.
And that's it.
Yeah, if you could just, did we get the address and the...
Yeah, I have 2244...
Brewster.
Brewster.
If you could just give the clerk your cellphone, we can follow up with you about that?
Okay, thanks.
If that's okay?
Yeah.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else in the audience would like to come forward at this time? Okay. Hi, how are you?
Yeah, my name is Mike West. I'm at 1073 Chatham Lane West, Delaware, Ohio, just on the near west side. So anyway, let's see. Hello. I'm here to address counsel tonight regarding the Better Roads for Delaware signs promoting "Vote Yes" for the income tax levy that are placed on the city-owned properties. There is concern that this practice may not be ethical, as not all taxpayers are in favor of voting yes. Of particular concern is the duplex property located at 1271 State Route 37 West. This property is owned by the city. It is currently a rental property with residents. There are better road signs in the front yard of this property against the wishes of the renters. The person who installed the signs gave instruction to the residents that the signs are not to be removed. Could we please get clarification on what is allowed in these types of situations? And can signs promoting a city tax levy be put on city property?
No, they can't and they shouldn't. And those signs were mistakenly put in the right-of-way and they're down now.
Okay.
The only sign that's up now that I observed was the 911 sign.
Okay, yeah, I saw that. Yep.
There should be no signs in the right-of-way.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Or in public places or anything? There shouldn't be.
No signs, no signs.
No signs of any sort.
No signs.
There's an ordinance or something?
Absolutely.
You don't want clutter or stuff like that.
Right.
Signs are not allowed in the right-of-way, period. They can be on private property, just not in the right-of-way.
Oh, cool.
There are several up right now that need to be taken down.
They need to go.
But just to clarify too, the city is not allowed to promote its own levy of taxpayer dollars. So city signs for the levy shouldn't be on city property even out of the right-of-way. So City Hall doesn't have any signs.
The parks don't have them.
And you don't or anything like that.
Okay, that's cool. Okay, that's great. All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, I feel really good about it.
There are signs both for and against in the right-of-way in front of...
Yeah, and I, right, and if Dave was here tonight, I would defer to him during the campaign season, this happens all the time and they do get, there's just kind of a proliferation of them within the right-of-way and outside the right-of-way, but in terms of city property, no.
Okay. Anyone in the audience? Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. Mr. Jones?
I have none. We have a Main Street meeting in two weeks, but that's all I have at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Keller?
Planning Commission heard an extensive presentation from Connie Kleema regarding the developments going on potentially over in the Stratford area. We, because we were down a commission member, felt, we felt like we needed to take a little bit more time and hopefully get someone added to the commission. But it's going to come, delay it a little bit before it comes to council. We were supposed to be down another member, but he ended up being able to come. But it was just too much information to digest.
Okay, thank you. Mr. DeGenova?
I want to echo. I attended the Finance Commission and Councilwoman Keller did an outstanding job. Had a cool one. I left at 9:00 because I had to get home and take my medicine, which I forgot tonight. But anyways, yeah, that is a great subdivision development going in there, 90-some acres, I think, 92. And I think they're all aware of what's happening. The only thing I'd like to make a comment on that was that Stratford Woods people didn't look the light to go straight through on, on, what's that, light there that...
Hawthorne.
Hawthorne. And that light was proposed when that development went in there and when the last house was to be built, there was to be a light there. But the developers all, blue town, they didn't put money in a fund or anything. But there is a record that shows and there should be a light there. Now, whether it goes straight through or not, that will be up to the Planning Commission. I'll be back to your discretion. Second item I have is civil service was canceled for the month of November, but we did have a swearing in at the fire station. I attended with Tom Sworm and I was just here for good looks. We had four permanent part-time young men that are really energetic and then we had a motion of a captain. We attended the captain. And it was a very nice ceremony. I know it real well. The last thing is, even though it's a couple weeks off, it's Veterans Breakfast on Veterans Day, which is not going to be at Source Point, it's going to be at the Armory, the National Guard Armory in YMCA, on November 11th at 8:30 in the morning, they'll start serving breakfast. Veterans...
What was the time, Joe? I'm sorry.
8:30. Veterans are free, spouses are $8, or any other guests. And they'll be honoring two or three people that day and the subject matter will be the National Guard then and now. And there'll be a two-star general that's going to be getting a keynote speak to that. And the ceremony then will start at 9:45 and it's going to be probably 15 to 20 minutes. And let's see, that's all I have. Election, November 8th.
No.
I'll be working up at the headquarters. There is an election. And going, going sign with Mr. West, calling signs, we had a lot of signs taken out of yards and I got ahold of Chief DeGenova and that is that and they can be prosecuted once they do that. So unfortunately, they were all one protector party and they all ended up the next day coming back. So I don't know whether he got ahold of where was the persons involved and stealing them all, but I guess it happens throughout the city also. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Roar?
HPC meets this Wednesday. Parks and Rec was last week and we're looking at new bike master plan, I guess, but we didn't get it. Some of the members wanted more time to digest it, so we're looking at it next month. Hopefully we'll have something about on to send to council.
Thank you. Mr. Hellinger?
Shade Tree meets tomorrow night, 7:00.
Exciting, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Schaefer?
I have nothing, thank you.
And unfortunately, I have nothing because I've been on a phone with a sick mother. So we'll move on to item eight, which is introductions. And I have Susie Bibler. I'm going to call you Susan, but it says Susie, so Susie it is.
Welcome. Call me Susie.
We're all friends.
Thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you for being here.
Components of this position that I was really excited about was the opportunity to work in my community and partner with the city. So I'm looking forward to this, for this position and really excited for the future. My husband and I have been residents with our two children, Delaware, for the last 16 years. My husband works for the city school district at his high school and both of our children attend Delaware city schools.
Any big plans, any changes you're thinking?
You know, there are definitely, I think we have a good foundation, but I'm ready to expand our city ground and seeing the changes that have occurred over the last 16 years downtown, I want to build upon that. And I think that we have a lot of opportunities regarding membership and beautifying our downtown area and continuing just some of the great programs that we currently have, making them better.
Wish you luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking on the position.
Thank you.
What's the program for the first Friday in November?
The, this month, November, will be, are thankful for the holidays. It's a recipe tour. Lutheran Social Services is a sponsor of that. Residents are encouraged to bring canned goods down and donate to the Lutheran Social Service pantry. And then different merchants downtown have submitted recipes, holiday recipes, and they're encouraged to walk through all the merchants and get a copy of their recipe. So everybody that will be attending will get a recipe book by the end of the evening. Yes.
Wonderful.
I know one of the things we put, we sent a letter to Main Street last year just pointing out a lot of those areas where we want to try to improve the relationship and we look forward to working with you. And I know you had a meeting today with Jackie and Michelle and Chip. One of the things we talked about, and it seems minor in the scheme of things, but the tree lighting in the last few years, it's great, but we're getting so many more people down there that we want more of an aha moment. So hopefully we can work with you in terms of making sure that we get the lights. And I talked to Ted about that earlier. It used to be four or five people would show up for the tree lighting, myself, the mayor, the Main Street person and a couple of other people. Now it's, we're closing the street and we've got probably close to 1,000 people there. So...
Yes, I'm very excited about that.
It would be more spectacular, I guess.
Yes, absolutely. I'm excited to be working with Ted on that. We actually met last week and actually before this meeting started this evening, we've discussed it even further. So I hope to bring you the best Christmas tree you've seen downtown.
All right, any other comments, Susie? Well, welcome very, thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
She can stay there.
She can stay there? Okay.
Right.
Okay, we'll move on to item nine. Clerk, will please read this on the record?
Item nine, ordinance number 16-94, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Heritage Ohio and sponsoring organization Main Street Delaware.
Yes, and this is a, an agreement that we have with state agency which administers the Main Street program for the state of Ohio, Heritage Ohio. That's actually where Francis now works. And it is, it's a self-renewing agreement that was self-renewing up until the point that the National Main Street Center required new language regarding sub-licensed trade agreements. There's something in there about their trademark. So they have asked all the, all the entities that have these agreements to up agreements. And that's what's before you tonight. So, but it spells out the responsibilities of the host community, of the sponsor, in this case, Main Street and Heritage Ohio. And Dave Eflin informed me last week that we maintain a membership in Heritage Ohio, the city does, and we do attend these trainings. That's one of the things they want to try to encourage is trainings with both the city and the Main Street staff. So we can take it to another reading if you'd like. It's a fairly, it's an intergovernmental agreement. That's why it's coming before you. And this is Susie's first time with this agreement, so it's kind of new to her probably as well.
Yes, it is. Actually, this is my first time seeing it. I will say that I was at a training two weeks ago, my very first, well, my second day on the job. And the training was very good and there was a vast majority, a vast representation of different cities and across Ohio and their city members and workers. So I would encourage all of you to attend those and I can keep you in the loop when those will be coming up.
Is this time sensitive?
No.
And does it require an emergency clause?
No, no. And actually, it's asked to be done before January 1st. That's when it's effective. So you could take it to another reading if you'd like.
I have some questions.
Yeah.
I mean, what happens if we don't?
If we don't, then they, any type of assistance that the Main Street program in Delaware gets from the state currently, they wouldn't get. They have to have an entity, typically the city, the host city, that is part of that agreement. So it's a three-way agreement.
I guess my concern is that our local Main Street program was left in questionable condition. And I'm just wondering, is there a benefit to us to participate in this?
Absolutely. I really think so. I mean, our Main Street program is modeled after the National Main Program, which is run by the Historic Trust for Preservation, Trust for Historic Preservation. It's a federally, federal entity that started this program back in the 70s. It's been tremendously successful. They have a four-point approach and they delegate a lot of that responsibility to state agencies. In this case, it's Heritage Ohio. I think there's tremendous value, Lisa, and I don't think being part of this and having this agreement from the city and Main Street and the state should anyway, it should enhance our relationship with Main Street. And the issues that we've had with Main Street are really, haven't really been regarding the, the agreement between Heritage Ohio and the state. It's really just things that we've talked about that we sent, put in a letter last year and that the board and Susan are willing to address. So, but if you want, certainly if you want more time, it's not a, it's not necessary to act on it tonight, but...
Anyone else understand my concern? Yeah, but I also know where the problem was and I don't think it's still at Heritage Ohio. So I'm okay with that. Okay. But if you want to take another reading, we certainly can.
Yeah, that's fine. And then maybe Susie can get up to speed on it as well. But that's fine. It's really honestly, just take it to another reading.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Item, kind of the agenda is the consideration of ordinance number 16-95. Ordinance number 16-95, an ordinance authorizing the annexation of 2.856 plus or minus acres of land, more or less, at the northwest corner of Cheshire Road and Glenn Parkway for the future site of fire station number 304 and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public property, health, safety, welfare, or to provide for the usual daily operation of a department or an office of the city. And to facilitate the annexation prior to commencement of major construction of firehouse number 304 and as such will be in full force immediately upon its passage. Thank you. Darren?
This is the first step in our, well, I guess first step in our construction of fire station 304, but we have to annex the property before we do so. This document and ordinance was prepared by David Moser, actually. He couldn't be here tonight because he's getting ready for a trial, but I want to give him a shout out for, for working on it. But basically, this takes in that property site that we bought many years ago because we're ready to start building. It was delayed a little bit because we also added in some pieces of road that were outside the city. So it's kind of a little bit of cleanup too. So we had to get another drawing done, or whatever it's called, of the property. So it's pretty non-difficult survey. Thank you, thank you. It's pretty non-controversial because it'll be a pretty easy process because the city's all owned. The property's all owned by the city, so it's a, it was an automatic acceptance by the county once we file it up there.
Expedited type two?
Yeah, it's going to be a type two. Sometimes type twos are difficult because you keep both taxing jurisdiction. So like a homeowner might not like that, but since we don't pay taxes on, on the property, it doesn't really affect us. So it will be an expedited type two.
Would you like this to go to another reading?
I don't know exactly...
I wasn't asking, I was asking council.
Because, well, I was going to say, I don't know what, I don't know if there's a need to start right now in terms of the construction project. Jackie, do you want to talk about that?
Just that, if sooner that we can get this down, we can start the process. There is an emergency clause.
We can also put a sign up and...
I'll make a motion then to suspend the rules for ordinance 16-95.
Second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Keller, second to Mr. DeGenova. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Roar?
No.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
I move to enact the emergency clause on ordinance 16-95.
Second.
Another, Mrs. Keller, second to Mr. DeGenova. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Roar?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
No.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
I move for the approval of ordinance 16-95.
Second.
Question to Mrs. Keller, second to Mr. DeGenova. Any further discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Roar?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle? Question carries. Thank you. And now we're moving... And now we're moving on to ethics training.
Employ your mind.
I'm sure it will.
It's like it did two years ago.
Okay, so. I don't need that one.
You just want one of them?
Well, they can't.
You have guests.
If they want to see, okay, throw it up there.
They're all leaving.
Really exciting. Okay.
It must be great, ethical.
I will sit, I'll just sit here because if I stand, I'll be on there. So, uh, as you know, uh, state law requires that we have ethics and public records training. I've done, uh, I think I've done half of an ethics session and half of a record session, so this is a good opportunity for us to put a bow on the rest of our year here. Oh, I gotta turn it on. Actually, I can see the computer. So, I turned this, oh, no, what did I do? Okay, there you go. I turned this into kind of quiz since this is, uh, basically I took what we did two and a half years ago and kind of improved it a little bit. Um, so I kind of made it a little bit more interactive, so you didn't have to stare at me and, um, think I was boring. So, first question is, does anyone remember one sources of ethical consideration? What are we thinking about? Why do, what are the sources of ethics that we have to be concerned about? You can guess wrong, it's okay.
The Ohio Revised Code.
Boom, okay, that is one. So there are three sources though. Ohio Revised Code is the most important one, that's the state law that told us what, um, what, the ethics law. Um, the second one is we have a Delaware, City of Delaware ethics policy that council, uh, passed, although at this point I think council's turned over enough that maybe only half of you remaining voted on that. Um, but we did, we updated our ethic policy, we had one for many years, we updated to clean it up and we based our policy on the model, uh, state. And then the third, it's kind of a tricky one, uh, that's the appearance of impropriety. Uh, what the appearance of impropriety is, is it's legal, it doesn't violate policies, but it might just look bad. Uh, and we're concerned about what people think about government, they want to believe that government is acting appropriately and in their best interest. So sometimes, even though it's okay, it's not advisable to do. So the other thing about these three sources is it's kind of a pyramid and they have different consequences. As I said, the appearance of impropriety, it's, it's consequence is really just loss of faith in government by our, our taxpayers and our citizens. The Ohio Revised Code has criminal penalties, so, uh, you hear sometimes about, uh, uh, elected officials or employees getting charged with, uh, ethic violations. That's a criminal case and you could go, um, in front of a judge, but most of them are misdemeanors, but there are a few felonies. Uh, I make this joke every time, but I luckily haven't had the occasion to have to remember which ones are felonies and which ones are misdemeanors because we haven't had a problem since I've been here. The City of Delaware Ethics Policy, um, that does not have criminal, um, ramifications, but you could lose your job if you're a city employee. Uh, and in theory, you could lose your position, uh, as a city council member if you violated our ethics policy. By the way, stop me anytime if you have any questions. So first thing, the most importantly, we, we want to talk about conflict of interest. Uh, under the conflict of interest, uh, law, public officials cannot solicit or accept anything of value from an improper source. So there's sort of two key elements there. Uh, this one's probably the easier one. What, what would you give me some examples of anything of value? Sports tickets, that's a good one, especially after the, the week we had. Indians tickets and all that stuff, yeah. Actually, there was an interesting article I read just, just, uh, this afternoon. Uh, the Chicago Aldermen, their ethics commission said they couldn't accept Cubs tickets at face value because they're going to be so crazy expensive that that would be an ethics cost, because usually if you buy the tickets yourself, it's okay. So yeah, the sports tickets is a good one, any, what else? Oh, that's also a good one, what'd you say, Jackie? Liquor, food, entertainment, um, anything else? One, we'll move on.
Travel.
Travel, there you go. We hit most of the things on my list, actually. So food, uh, is a, is something of value, sports tickets, uh, travel, uh, one that we don't often think about because it's not a thing, but employment also could be one. So, uh, hey, can you get my cousin a job, or can you get my wife a job, or my son a job? Employment is something of value because you get paid for it. So, we talked about what's a value, but what do we really care about? How much are we talking about? So I made this multiple choice. Uh, how much can you accept as a gift? A, twenty-five bucks, B, one hundred bucks, C, one million dollars, that's my Dr. Evil quote, and D, it depends, this seems like a trick question. What do y'all think the answer is? I heard twenty bucks? You heard a D? Anyone else? It is D, it, it does depend and it does seem like a trick question, uh, so here is the answer. The Ohio Revised Code, uh, basically uses the phrase substantial value. It doesn't give a hard line number, so the Ohio Revised Code will never say one hundred dollars, twenty-five dollars, fifty dollars, it just says a substantial value. Uh, I've been to a number of trainings with the State Ethics Commission, kind of train the trainer sessions, and they kind of like to call it the Bob Evans Rule. So if you're going to dinner with somebody or lunch or dinner at Bob Evans, that's kind of a family restaurant. That's not the type of value that's going to really make you change your vote or get some job or really sway your way to ability to act, and no one really thinks.
You've never had a wildfired chicken salad, then?
Is that good? Because I think, it's really hard to spend more than like twenty-five bucks at Bob Evans. But they did have examples of people going out to like Mitchell's and they'd go out and get bottles of wine and the bill was a hundred fifty, two hundred fifty bucks for one dinner. That's getting to the point where people are going to start questioning what's going on. Now, we, when we looked at this, we say, we, we like the kind of pseudo flexibility that's in the Ohio Revised Code. And a lot of people kind of thought back when I was at the state that a hundred dollars is a pretty good number. Uh, but we wanted to provide more guidance, so on our, in our, our ethics policy, we put in a seventy-five dollar cap, which we targeted as being a little lower than the state, so we'd have all clarity and we wouldn't accidentally violate the state law while following our ethics code. Now, in some situations, the right answer is zero. So can someone give me some ideas as when the right answer might be zero?
A developer who has a large development pending before a board comes and says, I'd like to take you out to dinner and talk about this and, you know, there may be an appearance of impropriety, it's just inappropriate for that to happen outside of a public meeting. So regardless of value, maybe it should just be a no for that.
That's, that is a hundred percent the right answer, so it's all based on the appearance of impropriety, where if it's someone before the board or something where we're making a big purchase, you don't want to even make it look like your opinion or vote might be swayed, and that would be the perfect example of when you wouldn't want to, maybe wouldn't want to do that. Again, are you going to lose your position over it? Not from an ethics standpoint, but people might make issue of it. So, uh, the example I usually use is, um, if you're a procurement, if you're the procurement manager and we're doing a big bid for, uh, computer systems, normally you can get a squeeze ball and no one really cares about that squeeze ball on your desk, but if people come in and see, I don't know, compu score squeeze ball on your desk and the other competitors come in and they notice that you have the other squeeze ball on their desk, they might say, this, I'm not getting a fair shake. So even though, even something as silly as a squeeze ball might not be a good, uh, if you're doing a procurement and the rivals might see it hanging on your desk. Uh, any questions about that? Okay, the other thing I want to point out under the ethics law, and we put this in our ethics policy, this total is cumulative throughout the year. So, seventy-five dollars total throughout the year, so you can't go to Bob Evans lunch every week because that's going to eventually add up, well, I guess depending on what you order. But if it gets up to above seventy-five dollars, now you're getting to the point again where a lot of small little gifts could add up to cumulative impact on your ability to be fair or at least look fair. So we talked about the first piece in red, which was the improper, um, or substantial value. Now we're going to talk the other piece in red, which is the improper source. So, who is an improper source? Uh, because if I, if my brother wants to give me a nice birthday present, is that something we have to be concerned about? Well, no, because he doesn't have anything to do with the City of Delaware. So, an improper source is someone, person doing business, um, with the city, so one of our vendors, uh, person seeking to do business with the city, so that's someone who's trying to get a contract with them. And then to go to, um, Councilwoman Keller's example, a person or business regulated by the city, so someone who's trying to get a permit or trying to get approval. Those people could potentially be that improper source. Uh, other things to, uh, so another funny example about that, I think I've told this before, when I used to work for the state, uh, we had a big IT department and they had contractors who they paid to work, basically to supplement the staff of the IT department. So they would be working side by side and you wouldn't really know who was a contractor, who was an employee, because they basically worked all day, every day. So one of the gentlemen invited this one, came to his wedding, including the contractor. Well, I had to advise him that that contractor can buy you a wedding gift because he is an improper source of substantial value. So I, I kind of ripped off one of my coworkers out of a wedding gift, so he wasn't too happy with me, but, uh, so it really does get into that sort of thing about, is that contractor trying to get business by giving stuff to people who work with him? Other things to avoid, uh, generally, and there are some exceptions that we don't need to necessarily get into, you, you can't hold a contract with the city. So, um, Carol, not to, Mayor Riggle, not to throw you out, but you do, uh, closings and things, so we don't let you do closings for the city, uh, because that, you, you're our city council person. Uh, also, uh, this hopefully comes without, uh, without saying, but I'll put it in here anyway. Voting or recommending or using your position to secure a contract for a family member or business associate. So, um, uh, try, Councilman DeGenova, I don't know if you have a, anybody you know who's does stuff outside of work, but you can't come into a, uh, city council and say, hey, this is, this is my partner in this other business and I really think you should give them the contract, so.
I, I had to avoid myself when we built the Justice Center and any construction because I was in wholesale planning.
Perfect example, so you don't want to come in here and say, hey, I'm in wholesale planning business, you gotta give, it's not my contract, but you gotta give it to my associate who also works with me. So that is a perfect example. Uh, finally, revolving door. Uh, for one year after leaving public service, you cannot represent any person before the city on anything you participated with while working with the city. So here's my question to you, because I've thought about this one a lot. Why do, and I don't think, I don't know the answer, I just made some up, but why do you think this is in the, in the law? What do you think they're trying to get at? Because like, why should we care what you do when you leave? Well, it's kind of a trick question, so I have two theories and I don't know if they're right. My first theory is I think time away from, you know, that separation makes it less likely that you'll get special treatment, uh, from city council. So, you don't waltz in here the day, the day after you, you leave and your replacement gets sworn and say, hey, guys, remember me? You should give me a hookup because I was once one of you. So, I think whether or not the rest of the council members was going to give you that special treatment, I think it definitely reduces the appearance that that might happen. Uh, also, I think it makes it less likely that you might vote on something, uh, in order to get that next job. So to go back to Councilwoman Keller's developer example, uh, you don't want to say, oh, I don't know if this is a really good development, but I'll go ahead and approve it because right before I leave office, I'm going to go get that job over there, then, you know, with that developer, then I'm going to come back and, you know, lobby my, my friends. So I think having that separation might help prevent you from thinking about that next step, so you're only voting with the taxpayers' interest in mind. Again, that's not written down anywhere, I was just thinking about why we should care about that stuff. So, ethics reporting, um, you can contact the city attorney, me, to make an ethics complaint. The joke I have is if you want to make an ethics complaint about me, then you probably wouldn't want to report to me, so you can report it to the Ethics Commission. Uh, this can be anonymous, so if you have concerns, you don't want to, for example, um, sour your relationship with another council member or with someone on staff or something. It can be anonymous. Um, that can be anonymous where you tell me the ethics complaint and I don't tell anybody your identity, I don't have to reveal that. Or if you don't even trust me, you can submit it anonymously to me. Uh, I had one when I was at the state where it was a made-up email address saying, someoneyouknow@yahoo.com, and I was like, oh, who is it? But I never found out. Um, so you can just submit it anonymously, if you don't get, just be sure if you do that to give me enough information that I can actually look into it, investigate it. Uh, that email was, look in this one employee's drawer. And I'm like, okay, I can do that, but what am I looking for? And I don't have a way to get follow-up information because the email address was bogus. So, you want to give me enough that I can actually look into it. And again, if you don't feel comfortable coming to me, or maybe for some reason you think I'm involved, you can go to, straight to the Ethics Commission, they can do investigations as well. Uh, as I said, resources, I'm the city's, uh, city attorney, I'm the city chief ethics officer, I can give you advice. So if you have a question, I encourage you to come to me. Uh, oftentimes I will issue you, uh, an opinion in writing, it's usually just an email, but sometimes it's a whole memo as an attachment. Um, that can help you, uh, when you could say, look, I try to rely on my city attorney's, uh, guidance if anything does come up. Uh, I can also contact the Ethics Commission to ask for an advisory opinion. Uh, why would I want to do that instead of writing you an opinion? Uh, well, the Ethics Commission is the one who brings charges. So, that letter from me might help you a little bit, uh, but at the end of the day, I have no juice over there, so if you did something that's inappropriate, they can still come after you even with my letter. Uh, that's a good segue to, when you do ask me the question, uh, give me all the relevant information. A lot of people, um, will ask me a question in a way because they're hoping I'll say it's okay. So say, hey, is it okay if I go to a, a training? And say, yeah, I don't see why it's not okay to go to training. And they left out, well, it's in Hawaii and the vendor's paying for it and it's all the alcohol you can drink. So you gotta give me all the information, because if, if you don't tell me stuff, I usually write back, here's the information you've provided, based on those facts, this is what I think is okay. So if you left out crucial facts, even my letter's not going to help you. Uh, there's also in, resources on the Ethics Commission website, they have a lot of interesting, uh, advisory opinions and information sheets and sort of one-pagers that you can look at. And I can off, I will often provide those to you as well. Uh, any questions about the ethics stuff we covered? All right, I'm going to give you the choice, do you want to burn through some email stuff? They're pretty fun.
They're fun?
I mean, I don't know, I tried to make them funny. Let's start. So, this is kind of.
You didn't let us answer.
I know, I just. We'll do like a couple and if you get tired of it, we'll stop. Um, because we did a little bit of ethics, our public records with our, um, social media, and this is kind of going with emails, but a lot of it translates as well. So, here's something that happens a lot. Um, an email from coworkers, it might be you, say, hey, forward stupid people, they often will send pictures, or it might be, you know, funny pictures from Walmart or whatever, I don't know. Um, so what do you think is wrong with this kind of email? I mean, you don't see the pictures, you don't know. Uh, what's wrong with this email is you're, this is, um, obviously we're using government resources, taxpayer resources, so you don't want to be sending around non-work-related ridiculous stuff. Uh, it's not a really nice way of referring to people, calling them stupid, and, uh, it's probably offensive, so it's just not a good practice. Also with those PDS, you're probably bogging down our server a little bit unnecessarily. So, my advice is don't forward around those pictures that people send around. You, you can't stop getting them, but when you get them, I just delete them right away. You can't control coming in, but you can control forwarding it.
You can look at them, then delete them.
Look at, look at them, just to make sure if they're funny, no skin. Um, and I think, I've noticed as people have gone on, they've stopped sending forwards at work, but I still get, every once in a while you come across some, but, uh, it's just, it's not very professional. And they're public records. Okay, so this is something that comes up, this is an email to a fellow council member from you. Task force is going really well, we should make a deadline to issue our final report, which is a miracle. Given the fact that I was on vacation all last week, you wouldn't believe all of the insert inappropriate behavior that I engaged in. So, what's wrong with this? See, I told you I had some funny ones. What do you think the problem is with this one?
Public records, number one.
That's exactly the problem, so this is a public record, it meets the definition of public record, you're giving a status update on, uh, a report that you're working on. Um, but since you threw that extra junk in there, I have to give that out with the public record when I get a records request for it. I should tell you that every example I'm doing with this comes with a real example in my life as a public records person or a lawyer at a law firm. So, we had a big lawsuit with these companies and we got, basically they dumped their whole email folders to us and we had to sort through for relevant information. And I learned about people's vacations, their affairs, and I saw all these pictures I don't ever need to see that I can't unsee because it was all just mixed in the stuff. So, yeah, you don't want to put your personal stuff mixed in with the public record because it gets traveled along right there with it. Okay, friendly disagreement, this is a, an email that you're going to send to the rest of the city council. Your decision not to approve X. I have to say your decision not to repair the bridge is shocking, I can't believe you would do that when people's lives are at stake. We have a report saying the bridge could fail within the next ten years and you refuse to fix it, someone is going to get hurt and it will be on you. So, obviously you're not happy that you lost that vote to fund that bridge repairment, can you think of a better way to make your position known, uh, to your colleagues? Saying it in a public meeting is, is probably, probably better than putting it in an email, because I, obviously we can get the tape, but at least you're telling them directly. Uh, also, I think some people, when they get that, they get angry about something, they send, I call it the flame email, and they want to just burn everybody down with it. But you can say it in a nicer way, you could say, hey, I respectfully disagree with the bridge thing, I think this is probably one of our bigger priorities and I wish we could have funded it. That makes your position clear and if anyone were to question it later, you don't have to talk about people dying, it's going to be on them, because, uh, God forbid if we ever get sued, this is probably going to be the first email that comes up, it, you know, evidence number one, and it just plays really bad. So this is the way to, try to think of a way when you're writing an email about your disagreement to be as professional and, uh, collegial as possible, and fact-based. Sympathy, this is an email to a vendor or a prospective vendor from you saying, sorry, I just wanted to drop you a note to say, I'm sorry the city didn't pick your company for the project. I thought and continue to think you are the best choice, but I was overruled. So, what do you think the problem is with this one? Well, the first thing is you probably shouldn't be getting involved in the sort of procurement of things because that, that's kind of a staff level question, so you don't want to be looked, seen as thumbing the scale. Um, but what, the real problem here is I think you're kind of opening up the door to that vendor challenging that selection. Uh, they're going to say, well, wait a minute, if they thought I was the best, why didn't I get picked? And then for the records request of all the scoring documents and all the bidding documents and certain. the records requests of all the scoring documents and all the bidding documents, and certainly we can provide those materials, but you're kind of making them feel like maybe they didn't get the best shot. The way we do procurement at the, most big procurements in the city like that is we would usually have a scoring team who would come together, score and prevent, pick that bidder. So we don't usually come out with individual scores for this very reason. It kind of lets people think, wait a minute, did something go on there? So probably would avoid doing that. Especially this part. I was especially surprised that you weren't picked because you were the low bid. Then again, I think the project manager is buddies with the company who had selected. So that might have something to do with it. Definitely don't put that in your email. I just hit some jokes there I didn't even know about. Okay, unprofessional. I don't know if I can read this one out loud, but insert council member's name as such a blank. I hate him. At that guy. If I see him walking on the street, I'll kick him in the groin. So this is very unprofessional and there are emails that come out all the time where people have these kind of really negative banter's with coworkers not here. That comes out in public records and it basically makes the whole city look unprofessional, but it really reflects badly on you as a professional. And I point out that while you can have a friendly disagreement with someone, it doesn't really make much sense to put it in there because it's not that interesting. This is the kind of thing that's very interesting and it goes viral on the internet. So if you don't like somebody, you can say it in a better way. But curse words and just personal insults tend to really get float on and it just doesn't help anything. Is there any more like that, Darren? Any more good ones? Yeah.
We have a couple.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. I apologize. I'm never going to be invited back. There are no more like that because I think we only have one more left. Nope. Go ahead. Okay, this was one. Not exactly what you mean. This is an approval. So this is to the developer from you and it's about access. I took a quick look at your plan. It looks pretty good to me. So this is where maybe the developer shoots your draft of the plan. You say, it looks pretty good to me. Problem with this is, is that an approval? Is that official? This is okay? Does that prevent you from coming up with questions later? So you really don't want to have those kind of communications in email outside the official report or that meeting that you have maybe with your committee or the, you know, public works committee or something like that because they're going to say, hey, I already got approval. The council member said it looked good. We have been, I have been involved in litigation before. Every email that anyone has sent has been used either against us to say, hey, look, city promised this, but then they took it away, or other places I went. So you don't want to be careful about that. So don't, just try not to say that stuff like that. If you have any questions about that, I can help you. Okay. Attorney privilege. This is to the city manager, to me, to a vendor, to another council member from you about the contract. This is Darren, please review and comment under attorney-client privilege. So what's good about this email? Kyle, I'm going to pick on you if anything. Attorney-client privilege wise. Yeah. So it marked it as attorney-client privilege. So it tells people that you're asking for my advice. You also say, Darren, review and comment. So that kind of tells you a little bit that you're asking for legal advice. What's wrong with this email is crucially, you added the vendor to this email. And when you add somebody outside of the city, you break the attorney-client privilege. So you have to ask for legal advice. It has to be between you and your attorney. That can be interpreted liberally where it's more than one person within the city. But once you break it with someone outside the city, you do not have attorney-client privilege. So that's why I cleaned it up with, request for legal advice makes it a little clearer than just subject to the contract. And then finally, rather than saying review and comment, you can say, can you tell us what it means, which is a little more about legal advice and just take a look at it. Because if I tell you something that's not legal, like, I think the price is too high. That doesn't technically render legal advice. Take the vendor off. I had some special effects I didn't know about. Okay, I got one, two more. One is a, a lot of emails from constituents, projects, different people. I highly recommend that you store your emails in subject folders. When we get litigation or a records request, you can then just go to that folder and transfer all the documents that we need from that folder or that person. And then I also recommend you set up subject folders on, on your server, not the email server, but you can drag them over to your file. Because that way you preserve them if something happens to the email. Because sometimes, I've just noticed that old emails sometimes go to this archive shadow server. And sometimes I click on it and it opens and sometimes I click on it and it doesn't. And I'm not an IT guy and I don't see Scott. He, Scott is here. I've been told that sometimes if you keep it on email, that if you pull it on a server, is that still true? Better to have it on like your, your hard drive than on a?
Well, it's just a major of the email. If it's just text, then it's a tiny bit, it's a potential, a large thing, we're talking video or movie. And that's a great concern. And my only word of caution would be if you're telling people to move something out of your email, that's perfectly fine. But if you're looking to like your PC.
Still the PC.
Not being backed up.
Yeah, share, your shared folder would be where you want to put it.
For those larger things, like movies or large.
PDFs, things like that.
Yes.
Same thing. If you're sending a super huge file, sometimes you don't really need to send that huge file. It takes up a lot of server space. So I would link to a shared folder or Dropbox like Michelle does with the agendas. Because if you send a copy of the agenda to all seven of you, that's seven copies of the same large file. And then also, if we have like a Word document and it gets changed, if you do a link, it points to that change as opposed to everyone having an updated copy. Finally, some things. This is extra credit because it's social media, but think before you post because people will see it. Don't post confidential sensitive information you learned as a council member on social media. Don't post making fun of citizens that come in. So if someone were to come into a city council meeting, don't post making fun of them because they're going to know it when they go on your page and it was them. It's only a few people that talk every meeting. And if they don't see it, someone else is going to see it. It's going to reflect badly on us. And I recommend against posting during meetings. Because when you post during a meeting, you could be criticized for either playing around when you're not, when you should be doing your job. So if you post, you know, top 10 movies of all time during a council meeting, they're going to say, why are you not paying attention at a council meeting? If you vote, if you post council-related stuff, they could say, well, I want to see all your posts during meetings because that's public records. I just avoid not, I avoid my not tweeting or doing Facebook during a meeting. Any questions? About email. All right. Well, we have now finished our email and ethics for the year. I think I've gotten a half an hour of votes. So I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Can't turn it off.
All right. City manager's report?
Just real quickly, the Iron Man date has been set for 2017, July 30th, which works much better for our schedule and the university. And we look forward to another outstanding event for our community and our region. And CICADA, there's a delegation.
Before we move on, a good reason to moving Iron Man earlier is hopefully that we can use some of the dorms at Ohio Wesleyan and keep those people that are here as athletes and families stay in our downtown, eating in our downtown and the city of Delaware retaining that money rather than staying in Columbus. So I think it is a very positive thing by moving that date.
Right. And the 20th was, the 20th was a, was the convocation. The university moved the convocation to Sunday, which was, wasn't going to work out well. So yeah, it's good doing it on the 30th. And we have reached out regarding the housing options. The CICADA delegation, if you've been contacted, they are, the students for Dempsey are coming in this week. And I believe you've been contacted. Okay, I've got information for you for that. And there is a public meeting that I'll be attending this week, this Thursday with both Reno regarding moving Delaware forward initiative. It's the last really public meeting. So anybody interested, please feel free to attend that meeting and come prepared with questions because hopefully try to address as many as we can.
What number meeting is it?
That's, that's probably, I, we're keeping up to 40 meetings. We've had, you know, I'm just talking public engagements, whether it's a meeting, a Facebook Live, going to a homeowners association. But it's been quite extensive. So we'll look forward to seeing folks.
When is it? Seven or six thirty?
Seven o'clock. Thursday night at the Y. Is it seven?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I hadn't gotten it with that.
That's what I had down.
And then I know that Councilman Schaefer and Mayor Riggle received complaints regarding water meter issues billing at the trailer home. I spoke to the owner out in California last week. He is going to be sending me their protocol, the file for doing the meter reading. And I believe that they're doing everything properly, but I'm going to be verifying that once I get the information. And we've relayed that back to the complainant who had called both you and Mayor Riggle. And I spoke to his daughter in Florida last week and relayed the information to her and gave her the name of the owner of the park. They really need to follow up with them directly. But I think we've gotten, at least we've gotten the contacts page correctly.
Thank you. Okay. Council comments? We'll start with Mr. Jones.
I have none tonight, Mary.
Mrs. Keller?
I have none.
Mr. DeGenova?
I have one. I overlooked Veterans Parade is November 6th at 3:00. That's right. They're going to be assembling the football field and the hardware and then going back to the fairgrounds on November 6th. That's all I have.
Thanks.
I have nothing, Mary. Thank you.
Mr. Holier?
Only thing is, a week from tomorrow, November 1st, there's the homelessness warming center meeting at Andrew's House, 9:30 to 11:30, I believe. So any interested parties can-
Andrew's House, you said?
Yes.
9:30 to 11:30?
9:30 to 11:30.
November 1st?
November 1st, Tuesday.
We need to set a date for the workshop?
Yeah, we're going to try to get some, send out, Michelle's going to send some out, some possible dates. I think we might try to couple it. Perhaps we've got a lot of budget meetings coming up, but I want to use-
Some of the Justin Milk and would not be doing it.
Yes, um, Jackie spoke with them. Yeah.
Speaking of budget meetings, I heard you say we have a lot of budget meetings.
No, no, did I say that? I didn't mean to say that.
You did.
I don't think I said that.
And that reminded me of something I wanted to ask.
I said I want to make good use of your time.
Why don't we just come in here one day and knock it out? Rather than coming in 16 times for two hours and killing everyone to December and making the holidays a horrible sad time in the city of Delaware, the council number. How about we just do ourselves all a favor and do the work out one time? I think it would be good.
On a Saturday? What are you thinking?
Anything. A Saturday evening would be fine. But just the continuity of being able to move from thing to thing to thing, hash it all out, and hopefully we would be in a good position of moving forward. I don't know how everybody else feels, but I'd rather give up one Saturday than ten evenings.
I think last year we did it.
We actually have, we've limited the number of meetings the last few years. But again, the point, I think if you're able to devote a full day, you can get quite a bit done.
Or suspend any boards and committees that aren't, you know, immediately pressing with planning.
Sure. Or some of the committees.
You know, a lot of the committees probably can-
Right.
I don't know. Just drawing out there for some more often.
Well, it's really just taking a look at, I think the most efficient would be a Saturday. We've done that before where it's, it's just the morning, you break for lunch and then you come back in the afternoon and do a cloth for quite a bit.
It costs us a lot more money to do it on a Saturday because it's bringing scatting. So that's one thing to consider. Isn't it the same as doing it in a, you know?
It's about the same.
As long as you don't make themselves a day.
Yeah. I think what we would do in that case is we would have, we would have different directors.
Scheduled at different times.
Yeah, exactly. We've done that in the past, actually. So we would have three or four in the morning, three or four in the afternoon. I think the only thing you'd need to do is probably leave, know that you're going to need at least some time, some follow-up time. That's a lot to process in one day. You might want an opportunity after you've heard all the, you know, in the past few years, we haven't really done the formal presentations. The directors have been available for questions from councils. So we have consolidated the amount of time that you've used. But I, I think there's merit to that, Lisa.
Well, if we do it early enough, then if we have questions, it would need to be followed. We could do it at the end of a meeting if we have meetings. We have our long one tonight.
Yeah. I think it's just looking at your calendars. And if you guys can just shoot, maybe if you could tomorrow, take a look at your calendars and let me know those dates that would work as far as a Saturday in November and early December.
Wait, twice?
November is pretty-
No.
No, just what, yeah, because.
Panic, four.
Right.
What about December 3rd? I don't know. He's got my calendar over there. He's got my phone.
December 3rd.
That's not the Big Ten playoff.
Oh, I don't have the schedule for Ohio State.
Thank you.
Sure. I think so. You don't know it, Lisa? Chris?
The Ohio State schedule?
Yeah, I think you make the playoffs.
It's always a factor.
Isn't it sad that we have to worry about that?
It's always a factor.
I'm not worried.
I don't, it doesn't matter to me. I didn't go to the school.
Once they beat Michigan State, they'll play probably on the 3rd. Play Michigan on the 26th. And I don't know whether to get a week off or not.
The 10th of December?
No.
The victim took it just.
Calling Saturday, which should be the 3rd.
Can we just sketch, can we just send some information?
Yeah, I'll do that. Yep. Just let me know if you've got some things. I'll have, Michelle's out. She had to take a friend.
All right. Okay. I did get a letter from somebody regarding the lights on Lawrenceburg Road in Central that they need to be changed. I want to spec, so someone will call up the guy.
Scan it. I'll just take a picture of it.
So you can send us a bill and have it looked at. I've sat through that light several times and it's, sometimes I run that red light, believe it or not. Yes, you heard me.
That wasn't in the ethics trading.
I don't care.
Trying left on that.
You can't. It doesn't, it never turns.
Never turns.
Well, never.
Nor is the one at-
Okay. Any other things? Good counsel? Done a motion to adjourn.
Do you want to?
We're growing the battle.
You don't have to. You can.
Do you want to go back in? Do you want to discuss it further?
I think it's going to get-
I think you should do it tonight. Okay. A motion to go into executive session?
So move.
So you go?
It's me.
Second. Have a, are you listening?
Yes.
Oh, you're writing it down. I was looking at it.
She's here.
Thank you. Okay. We'll go back in the vote into executive session. Do you need a final break?
Elaine?
I can make a copy of this.
We can sit here.